He talks a long time.
Yeah.
Can't have any of my minutes.
All right, so let's see, I've got 10 pages to know. So just wanted to remind you that it's Otter Falls 150th anniversary this year. And so we've kicked things off already with an exhibit at the museum called Fergus Falls Through the Years. Get a chance to come out and see that, please. It's really neat. We also have done our coffee class series. So we're in the midst of that. But then tonight, we're doing a little special city council meeting. So, because it's actually, March 26th, 1872 is when they had the first city election. Right? And so Lynn's done a lot of research on that. So we're going to hold a special council meeting. It's not an official meeting, but it's interactive. You've got your little scripts. So I'm just asking you to be good sports, play along, and be Johnny on the spot with your parts, please. So we can have, we'll have a little fun, but we're going to have some interactions, some historical characters. And we're going to take issue with some old city controversies over the years and show how that we've worked through those things and continue to do that today.
Most of them.
Figures it's the foreigner, I'm sure. All right, thanks Chris.
Why is my pot so small?
No one can understand that. Because you're the antagonizer. So, five o'clock tonight. Look forward to seeing you. We'll be there.
All right. Thanks Chris. Five o'clock tonight. And with that, we will call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to Hold to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. And first item of business this morning is an update from Jean Bowman of Visit Fergus Falls. Good morning, Jean.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. First, I want to apologize in advance for anything that I might say tonight when I'm in character. It's, he wrote it. All right. Good morning. Thanks for this opportunity to visit with you a little bit about Visit Fergus Falls. With COVID, it's been about three years since I've had the opportunity to present to you guys and say, hey, here's what's going on with our organization. I want to thank Chris, he is on our board of directors, so we're glad to have him here today. And Jim as well serves on our board. So it's nice to have those guys in the audience as well. So first, oh, did I turn this on? Oh, I went too fast. Too much coffee. No, thank you. All right. So first, just a little reminder about some of the basics about who we are and how we operate and what we are here to do. We are not a department of the city. We are a private nonprofit organization. We are also not membership based, so we're different than the Chamber of Commerce. We were founded in 1990, so 32 years. We've got a long way to go before it's 150, but God willing, we'll get there someday. I'm the only staff person, and we have 12 board members. Always serving on our board is an appointee from the council who the mayor appoints, as well as the Bigwood Event Center. They have a permanent position on our board, and now that is Justin Templeton, serving in that role. We are funded almost exclusively by a lodging tax, and that's 3% that the city collects on visitors who stay in a hotel. That's where our funding comes from. We don't get any appropriation from the city or, as I said, membership. We did get some grant funding from Explore Minnesota Tourism and other organizations during COVID, but really it's that lodging tax. The city keeps 3% of what is collected and serves as our fiscal house. So we've got all those great checks and balances and accountability with Sandy Cunningham serving on our board as well. And our objective is to promote Fergus Falls as a travel destination, really to get people to stay in our hotels, stay overnight, bring their families, and bring their money. So that's what we're all about. So first, the lodging tax update. 2021 numbers came in really strong at 138,000 plus. And we kind of use 140 as a typical year over the past, I don't know, five, six years, with the exception of COVID. So actually, 2021 was within just a few hundred dollars of 2019. So we rebounded really quickly, and 2022 is off to a great start. 2021, or excuse me, 2020, you can see, we took a big hit. We lost about 35% of our revenue. Understandably, people weren't traveling. Small businesses were closed, so we had a big hit there. As I mentioned, we, like every other small organization, wrote lots of grant applications and had just over $117,000 in grant revenue to keep us going. And here's just a quick, for those of you who are visual learners, the green is the 2021, and the red is 2020. So you can see the big difference there. And note the December of the green line, 2021, that is unusually going up, which, as I mentioned earlier, is not typical for a winter month here. So we, as I said, 2022 is off to a good start. When people travel here, that means money in our coffers, in the city coffers, in our small business coffers, reflected on our board are all those industries that encompass hospitality, and that's retail, attractions, restaurants, gas stations, really any place that, as visitors, which we've all been before in other communities, you know where you spend your money. COVID had a huge impact on the state. If you see your cereal box that I put on your desk, I didn't put them together for you, you guys have to do that. The 2019 data is in the upper left corner. That's green, shows you how well the state did in all those tourism sectors. And red is the huge hit that the community or the state took during COVID. So down about 40% statewide. Of course, places like the metro, where they have more conventions and sports tournaments, and of course, the George Floyd tragedy in 2020, they're certainly hurting much more than 40%, but places like Cook County had one of their best seasons ever. So that was really good for them. And lastly, one more math thing, and that is sort of that return on investment. The state has research showing that every $1 that's invested or spent on tourism promotion, which is what we do, returns $18 in local spending. So if you go back to our budget of $140,000 a year, that's generating $25 million in the coffers of our gas stations, our hotels, our restaurants, our attractions. And I know there are people who would say, well, how do we measure that? And you really can't. You know, we've got studies like this that extrapolate that data, and then we make it local. So certainly, those businesses are benefiting as we all are as well. We measure a lot more than just the dollars, and these are some other things. I'm not going to go into them all. In fact, we spent 20 minutes just on our website at our last board meeting. I know, Jim, sorry that he missed that.
I was on, I zoomed.
Oh, yeah, you zoomed in. Could you hear us?
From St. Martin.
Yeah, he did. You're so loyal. We measure, you know, who is seeing our message. And we really target an audience over 100 miles away from Fergus Falls, because you all live here, so you're not as likely to stay in our hotels. But those visitors who might come from over 100 miles and they're seeing us online. So we've got lots of website data. Certainly, social media is important. And we don't just measure who sees our message, whether they're in their car or scrolling online, but the engagement. And that means people who like, share, and comment on our posts. They don't just see it, but they're engaging with it. So we measure that as well. And I don't know if you can see the outline of this graphic on the right, but that's the state of Minnesota. And it's a heat map showing, okay, people who are visiting or visit fergusfals.com, coming to our website, this is where they are. So certainly, a lot in Fergus Falls, but you'll see a big blue circle down there in the Twin Cities metro, and that's what we want. We're doing that intentionally, reaching them with our advertising, our social media posts, our online ad buys, even some print ad buys. So that means it's working. Those are the folks we want to get up to Fergus Falls. They have the highest likelihood of traveling. Just some highlights for the year beyond the numbers. As I said, we're doing lots of targeted advertising. We try not to get too much analysis paralysis, because there's always lots of data, which I kind of love. But it shows accountability, and we need to be sure that we're on the right track. We also, last year, events got going again. So we were really excited to have Wy Sota back. They'll be back again this year. Long Distance Skateboard Association, last year, we partnered with Otter Tail Lakes Country with the Governor's Fishing Opener, new banners downtown. Certainly, you've heard a lot about the Bigwood Event Center. We're really glad that's up and open and running, and last year was a good year to be a liaison for that success. And then the last thing, or excuse me, the second to the last, is the advocacy piece. And that is that at a state level, there are certain issues that we advocate for. They are maintaining the post-Labor Day school start date, because we want to extend that summer travel season. And there are some efforts in school districts to start early, just because they want more learning days, or they want a whole week of spring break. And there are some exceptions allowable, but for the most part, we've been successful in maintaining that request. Also, the VRBOs is an issue, and third-party travel sites like Travelocity and Kayak, all of those, Expedia, they're not equal playing fields for commerce in the community. So rather than a city or even a state, you know, federally, we're hoping that there becomes some regulation that allows our community to return the lodging tax revenue to our area. We are going to be doing this year, fergusfals150.com, that's the website to go to if you want to learn more about what's happening throughout the year for the sesquicentennial. And we are back funding our micro grants to a tune of $10,000, which is a lot as part of our budget. And that means that, we know our event partners in Fergus Falls are the experts at running their events. We're not going to try to take over Summerfest or, you know, any of those big cat disc golf tournaments. So we award them funds to help them be successful. So that's a really key thing that we're focusing on again this year. We also take our lead from Explore Minnesota Tourism. They have a lot of great co-op programs. One of the things that they're promoting is called slow travel, and that is that, you know, it's not this fast-paced, energized, crazy vacation. It's just relaxing, come with your family, kind of unwind. So that fits very well with our destination. Also, travelers are traveling closer to home with higher gas prices. That's not a surprise. So whereas we might have promoted or marketed to Des Moines and Omaha and Madison, we're tightening up that circle a little bit and bringing that a little closer to Fergus Falls. And we do some outreach to Canada now that the border's open again. So those kinds of things, we get the trends from Explore Minnesota Tourism. Last year, they had a Minnesota Scoops program, encouraging people to go to ice cream shops throughout the state. And this year, it's Minnesota Sips. So we're, I'm really pleased that all three of our local breweries are part of that passport program. So we'll see some people hopefully coming to Fergus Falls to drink beer and stay overnight. Just a quick look, here's our board of directors. And again, they reflect those industries, lodging, and this is according to our bios. We have to have representation from lodging, the attractions, retail industry. And we also have a couple of co-op positions. Lisa Workman and I serve in a non-voting capacity on each other's boards, just so that we always know what's going on and how we can be efficient in partnerships there. And as I mentioned, Sandy Cunningham serves on our board as well. Have to thank all our partners. I'm not going to list them, and I'm sure I'm missing somebody. So, you know, it's just like, if I'm at the Academy, I'm going to forget to thank someone. But we'll save that performance for tonight. And...
No slapping.
Yeah, he's not going to slap me. Thanks, Chris. And that's kind of a quick wrap. Any questions, comments?
Any of you have any questions for Jean? Thanks, Jean, for everything you do. You're a great ambassador for the city. We really do appreciate just everything you do for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
All right. Next item is a discussion on commercial solar field fees, and we'll call on Jason Schutze. Good morning, Jason.
Morning, Mayor and Council. What I'm proposing today is in addition to our existing fee schedule, to put in a commercial solar fee, a flat fee, what we would default to instead of a fixed fee is, if you turn to the page of valuations that I had in the packet, you can see how the cost breaks down to total permit fees, and they're quite huge for the scope of the project that I would be inspecting and reviewing. So I'm proposing that we do a fixed fee that I have studied through different counties. Stearns County is one that does a program with a fixed fee that just covers the cost of what you're doing, rather than making it look like we're profiting off of a huge permit fee.
Do you have any questions for Jason on the...
Not special on the commercial, but do we have one for private housing? How do we regulate that one?
Regulating the fees of permits?
I mean, do we do inspections on people that put them on private houses?
Yes.
Right. And we have a fee for that as well?
Yes.
Right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Would someone like to move that we bring this to the council on...
I can move that.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. Further discussion? All in favor of bringing this to the council on Monday, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. A motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Next, we'll have an update on board and commissions. We'll call on Community Development Manager Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So this has been an ongoing discussion that we've been having for a while now. Some of our boards have reinvigorated themselves, gotten more membership, they're back up and running, which was a problem, you know, about six months ago. So that's good. We have some boards and commissions that we still want to clean up in city code. So what we are suggesting to do is remove the Airport Advisory Board. All of those members have resigned from their position on the advisory board in an effort to explore other options of supporting the airport, which we're okay letting them explore. We would like to add the Natural Resources Advisory Committee. They have been a mayor's committee that's been meeting for several years, sort of outside of city code. What we would like to do is codify them, and that gives us the added bonus of being able to notice their meetings, so people can attend. Members of the public will be able to save their minutes, so people can look back at their agendas and what they're working on, and just give them a little bit more access to staff, since our other boards and commissions generally have a staff member assigned to them. So we'll just give them a little bit more regulation and a little bit more access to City Hall. And then finally, the Sister City Commission. We are suggesting that that one also be removed from code and have that be a meet-as-necessary board. Any questions?
Any questions for Lynn? Would someone like to move that we bring these changes?
What's the small vehicle passenger service one?
That's the next item on the agenda. I could talk about that, but I will let somebody else.
Someone like to move that we bring these changes to the council Monday night?
I'll make that.
Anthony and Justin, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. A motion carries. Now, we're going to get to the small passenger vehicle. We're calling our Chief of Public Safety, Kyle Burden. Good morning, Kyle.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, the taxi cab ordinance, I think, has kind of lived out its life, just with the changes in technology and commerce with Uber and Lyft and a lot of online services, and then now it's even branching out into delivery services. I just think maybe it's time for us to put the taxi cab ordinance behind us and kind of move forward. I also think it's an opportunity to maybe open up. Sometimes I think in government, we regulate too many things, and I think this is one thing that we can probably get rid of. A lot of the online services like Lyft and Uber have a lot of the same requirements that are in our ordinance. There's nothing in law, state law, that requires us to regulate taxi services. Each city or county may choose to regulate them if they want. I think it's an incredible strain on resources. I mean, it's a taxi lab, $50? $50 for a license, I can tell you that we probably spend 10 times that regulating or just processing the license fees. And there's been some complaints from the community that they'd like to see more service. So I think by deregulating it, maybe there's an opportunity there for other people to at least throw their hat in the ring and see if they can make a go of it. So I guess that's the rationale behind this. And so there's a recommendation there for the city attorney to repeal, or start the process to repeal, the taxi cab ordinance.
Lynn, did you have...
Can we just add that the businesses that are operating, we have two taxi cab businesses in town right now, and they would still be allowed to run as a taxi? It's just that they would have to report to the city anymore, like when they change drivers or that type of thing. They're coming in almost daily. So that, the deregulation of the government part that Kyle was mentioning would be, they can run their business as they see fit, and they wouldn't have to report everything to the city. We would encourage those businesses to stay, actually. This is a big need for the community to have these taxi services.
Just less paperwork for them.
And so I trust, as chief, you don't see a public safety concern?
You know, I really don't. You know, maybe, I don't know, how old is this?
19...
Okay. I mean, most... Most passenger cars today, you know, I mean, are all equipped with not only seat belts but airbags. I mean, the safety and the technology in vehicles has increased so much from the time that this ordinance was passed. Doesn't, you know, operators are still going to have to have insurance on their cars, that type of thing. So I don't know what we're really accomplishing here, other than...
Sure.
Creating red tape, so...
And I have, I echo the sentiment that the public, I've heard from the public too. They want these services, and if this is a way that can open up for more people to offer those services, we don't want to get in their way of doing that. As long as it's not a public safety issue. So appreciate that. Jim?
I will offer that.
Thanks, Jim.
Second.
Second, Krista, thank you. All in favor of moving this to the council on Monday, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, chief. Item number five, our city code amendments. We'll call on Guy Taylor. Come on, Guy.
Morning, Your Honor. It's the morning of code changes. Sorry I didn't get the memo in the packet last week, but there's two cleanup items here and then one change to talk about. The cleanup items, Sections 151 and 35, both mention snow removal. They weren't consistent with each other. One mentioned snow had to be removed within 12 hours, one said 24. So it's recommended that we keep with the 24-hour timeline for snow to be removed from public sidewalks. Section 5124(c) states that disposal refuse from the Fergus Falls State Hospital shall only be performed pursuant to an agreement between the city and the state. For obvious reasons, we recommend that be repealed. Then the one to talk about is sewer services. Back in June of 2015, change to the ordinance put the liability of sewer services that lead from the main to a building. The maintenance of those lines was put on city, on city staff. So we have no capability of maintaining that line in most cases, unless there happens to be a cleanout in the right of way. So since that change, we've spent about $50,000, a little over $50,000, in doing maintenance, sometimes excavation and repairs to these lines that they're in the right of way, but a lot of times, it's due to something having been put down the line from inside the building. Granted, there are a few times where it's been due to city boulevard trees that have caused a problem. But since we have no way of maintaining that without gaining entry, coordinating business owners, residents, and our city staff time, we're recommending that we go back basically to what the language was, and the city maintain the main, and then the building owner maintain the portion of the sewer service from the building out to the main.
Can I ask you a question on that? Because I'm trying to remember the details on that 2015. I remember it was a tree root, I believe, if that's... And so my question is, is if it is a boulevard tree, I know you just mentioned that, what is the, what happens there?
Yeah, I think if it is determined to be a boulevard tree, we would still take the responsibility for that. If it's determined that it's not maintainable, roots in a sewer line is maintainable to a certain point.
Sure.
It's just, they got to be rotor-rooted every once in a while. And that, we see as a maintenance item, not a item that needs to be just blank slate replaced. It can be definitely maintained.
Okay. I think one of the issues back in, was the cost of the road repair. You know, that was obviously a burden on a lot of people, you know, and I think that's...
What do you mean?
Well, when the pipe is in the, like, in the physical road...
Right.
And then you've got to replace the pipe all the way from there, you have to excavate the road, as well as the kind of the boulevard, and then, you know, to the house.
So, if I may...
Yeah, please.
To that, Mr. Hicks, in the packet, City Attorney Nicomal has drafted some language to address that. And so we'll work through that, and when it comes to you for a first reading, there'll be something in there to account for that cost, I think. A city share to that in some way. But you're right, that is the portion that gets to be sorted.
Somebody had that dug up twice, I mean, in a very short period of time.
But if...
Please.
A little more history on that. The whole discussion was around water services. And then at the last kind of minute of that discussion, sewer services was also included on the motion. So that whole incident stemmed from incident with Glendy Nielsen Funeral Home, where they had a couple excavations and street repairs and whatever, and then, yeah. So both services at that time were included in that ordinance change. And like I said, we just have no way of maintaining that portion of a sewer service line.
Sure. So we're also looking, then basically we're separating water and sewer?
Yes. And they are separated in the code as it is.
Got it.
You know, and to expand on that a little bit, Guy said it, but I think it's important to really hammer the point home. With sewer services, it's really one directional. It's whatever's coming into the line at the house going to the main, which is beyond any of our control. Water service is coming from the main to the house. So we do, you know, want to bear some of the responsibility of the line related to the water, but the sewer is really dictated by the homeowner and their habits and the things that are going from their home to the main. So that's a distinction, I think, worth making.
Brent? So the problem with the tree root, especially if they're a boulevard tree, we're going to take responsibility for.
If it's to the point where a sewer line needs to be replaced, yes. But if it's...
You know an individual I'm talking about. We've got this problem there, and it's literally under the street.
Right.
This is a problem.
And that one can be maintained. So it's rotor-rooting, or we do introduce a chemical into the line on occasion that kills the roots. So there are ways to maintain those service lines without digging them up.
Yeah.
So if, Your Honor, if you could direct us to work with the city attorney to draft some changes to that, we'll have that for a first reading Monday night.
Okay. Do we accomplish that by a motion to...
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you.
Second.
Third.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Guy. Next item on the agenda is Public Improvement 9508, which is Phase 3 of the Regional Treatment Center Preservation Project, and we'll call our Administrator Andrew Brumstedt. Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Your Honor, council members. I learned this morning that I'm filling in for Brian, so you'll have to bear with me. I think I'll be up here for a little while. If you don't mind, Your Honor, can we move the order around just a bit and accomplish the downtown riverfront piece first? I'd like to get Grant back on the road before the wind picks up. I don't know where he is.
He just went on the phone.
He's calling into Kent, but for his benefit, let's knock this one out, and then he can get on the road back.
Yeah, sure. We'll go ahead and move to item number eight.
So, Your Honor, council members, you're acting as the city council on this particular item. We do need action today, so I'm asking for a resolution rather than moving it forward to the council meeting on Monday. And that's related to the timeline that we've laid out with opening bids on April 27th, and then the potential for the city council to consider a contract award on May 2nd, assuming that pricing is fair and the financing plan that the staff lays out is acceptable to all of you. So the action today is a resolution accepting the project plans and specifications, and then looking for authorization to advertise for bids. We went through this in detail at the last council meeting last week. We talked about then that we really need to go for bids to understand the actual costs, and then we can make decisions from there. Getting an understanding of what those costs are in this somewhat volatile market, I think, is important, and will give us a clear picture as to whether or not we can proceed. We are suggesting five bid alternates. Again, that is to provide ultimate flexibility to the council if they are to award a bid and we need to, um, move the cost in a certain direction. So those five alternates are listed here. I don't have any other information to add. We covered this in pretty good detail. The memo was attached in the packet that we shared last week. And, um, really just looking to go out for bids, get the clarity we need to make those decisions as to whether or not we'll go forward.
Thank you, Andrew.
Grant, Grant is here to answer questions if you have any, and I believe Kent Logge is on the phone as well.
Someone like to offer a resolution and we have discussion if there's?
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions for Grant, Kent, or Andrew?
No, everybody knows my position.
I'd like to ask the question.
Scott?
The one item that appeared to be new to me and maybe I just missed it before, was the first bid alternate regarding the sewer system and the rerouting of the line that goes across the river by the River Inn. And I wonder, does that, what does that involve?
Um, so that involves, so basically, I don't know if you guys are all familiar with, uh, the pipe that spans across the river, just, uh, south of the River Inn. Basically, we're exploring the option and getting, uh, bids to remove that and then reroute it to where it would come under the bridge, on the north side of the bridge, we'd remove that crossing and come under the bridge. And then there'd be a grinder station or a pump that would pump it up to the parking lot, basically. And so, um, we're just exploring that option to see what price it would come in at. Um, and so that's why we have it as an alternate.
Question on that, if I, and not to detour too much, but we did have the discussion by a citizen at the last meeting. Is, is, and I don't want to get into a deep discussion on this, but is the cost on that, uh, to pump that one up and over going to be similar to the one on, uh, further west on the river?
I, I can't speak to that. Kent, did you hear that?
I did not.
I could say that's one building where that sewer land that crosses west of South Unionia.
I know that question would come up in the public, so I just wanted to ask it. Uh, and I didn't want to go down, that's a whole other separate conversation, but it's something I think that we do want to keep on, on our minds at some point when the opportunity to keep that, um, as part of discussions.
I think Guy has answered my question. It's that, that line going across that would be replaced, that just serves the River Inn only, it's not a greater portion of the.
Right, it's just their service line.
Okay.
On, on the specifications for that, then, can we put up some sort of like, you know, guardrail type structure so that if there's a pipe running under that bridge, you know, already there are kind of people that go down there and go round? You know, so it would, the, the pipe needs protecting for people to not skim across it to go under the bridge.
It would be underground. The pipe would be completely buried. Yep.
Okay. That answer your question, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Grant or Kent? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
That resolution is, thank you, Grant. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you, guys.
All right, then now we'll, we'll go back to item number six, which is phase three of the Regional Treatment Center Preservation Project.
Yes, thank you, your honor, council members. Um, if you recall, at the February twenty-second meeting, superintendent Drake had approached the council, um, talking about wanting to explore the feasibility of the school district, utilizing the main tower and, and building a new elementary school up on the RTC grounds. And, uh, with that being said, the council directed staff at that time to put together a, a proposal and a scope that would focus the remaining one point seven million dollars on only the tower, specifically the tower. And so that's what's before you this morning. I did share with all of you, uh, late in the day yesterday, an email that I had received from superintendent Drake that they've more or less determined that, um, the tower is not going to be feasible for their project. And, and I think we probably all kind of maybe assumed that, but needed to do the due diligence and exploration to actually get to that, uh, determination. So, um, the, the question, I guess, before you all is, do we want to continue down the path of the scope related only to the Kirk bride tower? Or do we want to revert back to the scope that we had talked about previous to that discussion with the school district, which focused on, on more segments of the building? And I'm totally fine if we want to, uh, park the conversation until Monday and when Brian can be with us. I think he's going to be key to the conversation. But really, I think that's the, the conversation and the decision that staff needs from council in the very near future so we can get moving on this. Stan Tech's professional services agreement is one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Those costs are, um, reimbursable through the state grant. And the action we'll be looking for, um, either today or, or on Monday, when we have the discussion, is accepting that professional services agreement and then ordering the project plans and specs. And that's where you all have to decide, um, are we on path A or path B? So I'm totally fine waiting to have that discussion until Monday as long as you all come prepared to make that decision or we can dive into it right now if you want to as well.
I would suggest if Brian's, you know, been key to these conversations with Stan Tech and putting these proposals together, that we have this discussion on Monday night, if that's acceptable to everyone, we can, we can.
I'd like to make a comment. Sure. As far as we know, at this point, has Shipbo weighed in on any of the suggestions that have been made, whether it was this Plan A or Plan B, as you've described them?
You know, I, I, I don't know the answer to that, Bruce and, and Brian would. So that's probably another good question for Monday. I do know that, um, some of the, the first scope, the original scope was, um, run by Deed, who holds the, um, state bonding dollar grant, uh, related to this. And they had determined some of the costs to be ineligible. So, um, I would venture to guess some of these costs have been run by Deed as well, but I, I don't know that for certain. I think that's something Brian's going to have to, to provide for us.
Will, will somebody from Stan Tech be able to join on Monday?
We sure could ask, yeah.
I mean, you have to ask kind of questions like that, Scott, you know?
Sure. Well, there's a couple of specific things that I guess I could just put in your mind so you've got it before next Monday. And that is Shipbo needs to approve whatever we, whatever is happening in order for the tax credits to remain, um, in place for a national historic registry building. And if what has been suggested in this second plan wouldn't meet those requirements, then that's, uh, that's a mistake because those tax credits are critical to any future development, whether it's the school or anybody else. Now with the news that the school is probably not interested in any of the buildings up there, clearly Shipbo wouldn't be supporting any, anything that the school is going to be behind because they want to see the building stay there in favor of the, you know, the, uh, building remain. And the other, the other things that are in play is the legislature still hasn't finalized their decision on the match for the tax credit extension that would be another eight years of potential, um, access for that. And for any potential development that go forward, really, that's a critical piece. And we may not have that answer for another month or six weeks or.
The end of May, yeah.
You know, it depends on how the legislature plays that out. It, I mean, it could happen next week, but it won't. You know, it'll get dragged out. And so for us to choose to go down any road until we know whether we've got the tax credit extension in our pocket, so to speak, uh, I think would be premature on the one hand. And then I think there's very likely other proposals that are in the wings, so to speak, that, uh, would compete very strongly with what the school has proposed. And it may come to where we want to see those options all laid in front of us before we choose which of these, uh, directions to go with the renovation money. And so to that end, I'm not in any real hurry to jump on this and make a decision on Monday. And I don't think we, I don't think we'll be able to make a decision on Monday. So whether we have somebody come and give us more details or not, it doesn't hurt to hear more about it. But, uh, the key factor would be whether Shipbo's had any chance to review what's been suggested one way or the other. I think that would be a very important piece of the puzzle.
Your honor, if I, if I may, just, just to note, um, I don't know if they've been consulted on the front end and they likely will and should be, but then to note the process, we do, um, we do consult with Shipbo at the thirty, sixty, and ninety percent phases of plan preparation. They have the opportunity to comment, um, at all of those phases. My only concern with waiting any longer, well, two things. One, if there is a development proposal or a developer at the table, um, the way we use these funds would be under more scrutiny and we'd have some limitations. I don't want to find ourselves in that situation. And two, I may be mistaken, but I think these funds expire at the end of the year. The further we push into this building season, the tighter that schedule becomes. And I don't know, again, I would defer to Brian on, on the comfort level with that, but I just want to make you guys aware that, you know, the longer we wait, the, the more stressful this is going to get for us in November, December, we're pushing against a deadline. So I fully respect the decision that you guys make, but go ahead, Bill.
And the deadline may be June thirtieth. I know it was always December and then we pushed more with the state agencies and deed. And I think they did determine next June, however, that's really this building season, of course. Versus next building season, so.
So just something to keep in mind, but totally whatever the direction the council wants to go with this is fine.
And we can have that discussion Monday night and we'll make sure that someone from Stan Tech is there. Scott, go ahead.
Well, then with that in mind, I would suggest that we come prepared to vote with the original plan on Monday. Because if the school is not interested in this, there's no point in going this route to putting all the money into the tower building either. So we might as well proceed with what had been originally proposed that would fix the roofs on the remainder of the building and do the water mitigation and all of that and get rolling on that as quickly as possible. And frankly, I was hoping we could move as quickly as possible last year. And so let's just go that way. So that's what I would be in favor of seeing us do on Monday.
Thank you, Scott. And we'll have that discussion.
So I'll, I'll invite Bruce and, and Brian will be prepared to have that discussion. And both of those options will be before you in the hopes that we have a direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Yes. Next item is, uh, Public Improvement five three five three, mill and overlay and seal code projects.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, council members. It's, uh, exciting to be talking about, uh, summer projects and, and more specifically, street projects. Uh, staff has been evaluating candidates that will receive the overlay and seal code applications. Um, on the map enclosed in your package shows those, uh, locations that are potential for this year's project. And just at a high level, it's the area back behind malls. So it'd be portions of Otter Tail Drive, portions of Western Avenue, Kennedy Park Road, Aspen Development, and then those, those streets, um, I don't remember if it's Andrew and all the, the named streets. Um, it's generally that area.
Remember the one Andrew though, huh?
Because he's a friend of mine. Not, it's not named after me in any way. But anyway, um, I could guess the names if you'd like. No, so those are, that's the general area in which the seal code project will happen. Our budget, uh, our budget for, uh, mill and overlays in twenty twenty-two is just under two hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and forty-two thousand for seal code applications. Um, the streets that will be scheduled for mill and overlays have not been identified, but they will be within Ward Two. We do have a policy where we go ward to ward to ward to ward every year to try to keep it, uh, spread evenly and fairly across the city. And this year is a Ward Two project, so, um, engineering staff will determine those exact streets. Um, we are looking to initiate public improvements five three, five three and five three, five four and order in project plans and specs for both of those public improvement projects. Staff will, uh, prepare these plans and, uh, cost estimates and then get authorization to advertise for bid with the completion date projected to be, um, by September of this year.
Thank you, Andrew. And we can bring this to council with a motion. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of that motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? That motion carries. And twenty twenty-two project updates, do you want to tackle that one?
I'm going to just, no, I'm going to tackle it and then, uh, but first I would like to do number ten. Just finish with that PowerPoint if that's possible. So, uh, the city was approached by Fergus Falls Law LLC. And, and for folks who don't know who that is, it's the Klein Jensen Busso, uh, law firm over here on Mill Street. And, uh, they're interested in purchasing some lots that the city owns, uh, adjacent to Adams Park, just north of AMP Insurance. And when, I don't know if you have that map available or not, but, um, the lots that they're looking at purchasing are similar in size to the AMP, which is directly south of that red box there. Um, the challenge with these lots is that there's an easement in place or deed restrictions in place by the state of Minnesota that they can only be used for park and recreational purposes. And there's also an easement, um, that Otter Tail Power has that would constrain the use of these lots. So what Fergus Falls Law LLC is asking the city is if they can have the ability to go out and work with the state of Minnesota to try to remove those deed restrictions, work with Otter Tail Power to find the, uh, appropriate, um, resolution to that easement and then purchase the property from the city of Fergus Falls. With those, um, restrictions and easements removed, there would be no barriers to selling this property. They are proposing to do all of that work, um, at their cost. They're asking us to enter into a letter of intent, which basically states that if they are successful in those efforts, we would work towards a purchase agreement with them. They are going to hire, uh, Steve Shire to do an appraisal on the property. They picked that appraiser. They are going to fund and cover the cost of that appraisal. And then the price of that appraisal or the price that's determined by the appraisal would be used, they're proposing as the purchase price, should they be successful in removing all of those barriers. So, um, that's really the request is, is whether or not the city is comfortable entering into that letter of intent now and allowing them to start that due diligence work and see if they can, uh, remove those barriers. You see here, it would be lots two, three, four is what they're asking for, highlighted by red. And then just that, that dedicated road right of way, which is an old right of way directly to the west of that red box with the number four. Um, we would also probably include that so we don't have a little island strip of land that we have to mow, um, should we be successful. So it would just really square up with the parcel that AMP Insurance is built on and have just about the same footprint. So that's the request before us. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So I have a question. The, um, the restrictions, the Otter Tail Power get that, the state and then the, the restriction that it only is used for park, is that, was that part of the condition when that land was gifted to the city?
Yes, yes. So it's a very old restriction. Um, I, I don't know if this particular parcel was part of the Adams, uh, donation or if it was something that the state deeded over to the city, um, contiguous to the park and had those restrictions included as well.
So it came from this, you're not sure about the?
I'm not sure the origin, but I know the restrictions have been in place for many.
The reason I'm asking is because, because the, um, if it's a state restriction, that must, I, I'm kind of confused on that. You normally would be something that's in our records that when the property was gifted to the city, right? It, it is part of a park and can't be sold?
I believe this particular one was gifted to the city by the state. They were the ones who put the deed restrictions on at the time when they gave the property to the city so that they would have to, um, agree to removing those deed restrictions, um, or they would remain in place. So that's the request that, that the law firm is hoping to make of the state of Minnesota. I have no idea if there's a precedent for, for doing that or not. I have no idea what the likelihood that they will successfully navigate that.
Just so I, um, understand, but it's a, obviously it's a, a good commercial lot, which would have commercial activity or law, or office activity. And Guy, is there any, I mean, is that used? It's not currently used for?
It's not at all. It's just. Gras, we mow, yeah. There's really no recreational things going on.
Future, you don't see a future value for recreation? I mean, we're not losing part of our parks by doing this.
I don't think so.
We're gaining a commercial.
And it's kind of, it's kind of cut off. The Hillcrest owns this parcel here, all the way up to here. So, I mean, it really is just an island.
Oh, okay.
Of city land.
Tom?
Um, do we know if they are planning to leave those trees there? And could we put something into an agreement that they do leave those trees there?
Um, to answer the first part of your question, it's probably too early to answer that. I have no idea. I don't.
Yeah.
They're not going to invest any more money into this until they can figure out, you know, whether.
I guess I just wanted to put it out there that it would sure be nice to see those trees stay.
Yeah, we can encourage that. I don't know if we could require that. They are in a challenging location as to where the, like, entrance probably would be off of Pebble Lake Road. So you might lose some of that, but I think giving them the, um, thought that we hope to see those, you know, as part of their plan is, is probably the best we could do.
We wouldn't be able to put something into a purchase agreement that says, don't touch our trees?
I think anything's possible, but I don't know if that's the direction. I don't know.
I'm not sure they could build and still leave those trees.
Andrew, would we not maintain a, a right of way through there, the boulevard?
Um, we don't currently have one, I don't believe.
Would we create one, I guess?
Potentially.
Those trees would be the city's.
If that would be beneficial, yes. I think they'd be open.
It'd be beneficial to the Lorax.
And, and again, a lot of these questions, you know, will be answered, but it's, we're on the way front end of this thing, so.
I think a related question to what Tom is asking would be sidewalk and whether or not there is or would be a sidewalk included in any development there. So as you're looking for other things to throw into the mix, you could throw that in.
Okay. I think the, the first question to ask on, related to all of those things is whether or not. Yeah. We can maintain that right of way or get a right of way as part of the process, but.
I, I think I, I would make the, uh, motion that we, that we go ahead with the letter of intent. I mean, you know, we're meant to be a city of saying yes as opposed to putting too many restrictions in. I mean, if we put a paper in. I mean, if we put a pavement in, if we make it, then we'd have to say the same to AMP. And it's a footpath that really goes nowhere, you know, at this point. And it's on a busy road, so. And as you say, if we start putting too many restrictions in place, then they might not even bother.
I'll second that.
Motion, second, okay. Yeah, I think just, I mean, I think saying that the city would like to see this tree safe as possible is, I think, a good thing. But at the same time, we're not going to put so many restrictions that it's not a workable deal. So we've got.
Besides that, it's income for the city.
Yeah, exactly.
The building there on something that we're getting nothing for right now.
Seeing as we've lost Fergus, I mean, the Daily Journal Building is going to be tax free.
So we have a motion and a second. Is this, I'm clear, is this going to the council or is this?
It is, your honor. And the action is to enter into this letter of intent, which really gives them the ability to start their due diligence.
Got it. Okay, so the motion is to bring this to the council. On Monday night, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Last item on the agenda is an update on 2022 projects. And we'll call on City Administrator Andrew Brumsepp.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. I will run through this relatively briefly. And if anybody has questions, we can certainly get Brian to answer those. I'll start by just thanking Lynn Olson, Dan Edwards, and Brian for their work on putting this together. It's a fairly significant presentation and, you know, appreciate their work because there's a lot of good stuff in here, so. We'll just run through it relatively quickly. Can you control it for me? That'd be great. Union Avenue Street and Pedestrian Improvement Project. The scope is Union Avenue from Junius to Lincoln, and it's a street resurfacing project with pedestrian improvements. These first three projects I'm going to talk about are probably more immediate because they're going to happen this year. So we'll focus on those a little bit, starting here in May, substantial completion by July 30th. Projected cost is $900,000. And the status of the project is that there is a contract awarded to Central Specialties so the work can begin as soon as conditions allow for that. This is just a quick map showing that area from Junius up to Lincoln Avenue related to that project. Public Improvement 5314 is the Union and Lincoln Avenue Improvements. This is Union Avenue from Fur to Lincoln, Lincoln Avenue from Union to Freiburg. And it's a street resurfacing and then pedestrian improvement project. That's a fairly significant project for us as these are two of our busiest, if not the busiest, roads. The plan is for that one to kick off in the middle of August and it will be substantially complete this fall. Final bid documents are being worked on right now and then that will go out and we'll be ready to roll. That's 80% federally funded and then 20% local funds. There's the picture of the scope of that. You see it goes all the way up to Fur near the RTC and the county buildings and runs from the Lincoln-Union intersection over to where you turn onto Freiburg towards the arena. So really a significant project, a lot of coordination involved. And we're going to do our very best to keep road traffic access at all times, so. Public Improvement 5344, that's another one that's likely to happen this year prior to school. Starting, that's a street resurfacing and pedestrian ramp improvement project on Randolph from Springon to Freiburg. Freiburg from Lincoln to Summit, Kevore Cascade to Freiburg, and then Whitford Street from Summit to Kevore. That's also in the process of being worked on with bid documents. So primarily focused around the Kennedy Secondary School. And then you have that small portion that picks up where we stopped and Lincoln and Freiburg there. So really a substantial project in its own right. So a lot of, a lot of work to be done this summer. Next is the City Project 5958, which the contract will be awarded potentially at the council meeting on Monday. That is construction, constructing sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, and then pond. It's curb and gutter as well, starting here in May with completion this fall. And then the final coat will be put on July of next year. That again was the Rogers Development up on Park Street. There's the proposed layout and all of those costs will be funded through special assessment, which will be funded through tax increment district. We just talked about these projects, the 2022 Mill and Overlay Projects. I mentioned that Ward Two is on the cycle this year. $269,000 worth of Mill and Overlays in the budget and initiating that project on Monday night. Then the Seal Code Project, that's the streets, like I mentioned, behind the mall there. $120,000 and again initiating that project on Monday night. There's the map. Pebble Lake Golf Course Storm Water Mitigation Project. We're working on delineating the wetland for water retention ponds at the golf course and then getting permits for pumping the retained water from the ponds for reuse on the golf course. So really recycling water within the course itself rather than, you know, allowing that to run off or pushing it elsewhere. And that process is currently in wetland delineation stage. And, you know, when we, when we get an idea of what the, what the scope of that is, it'll be back before the council. I'm not sure if that's a 2022 project or 2023, but I know that engineering staff has met multiple times with representatives of the golf board and as they're scoping that project. A lot of PIs in this one. These numbers are probably more confusing than they're worth, so I'm just going to look at the streets. It's a street utility replacement for next year, 2023, on Summit Avenue from Broadway to Oak, Linden Avenue from Broadway to Oak, and then Laurel Avenue from First Avenue to Broadway. And preliminary estimates are about $600,000 to be funded through special assessments and city utility funds. We are currently in the preliminary design phase and we're working through the appraisal process as it relates to the proposed or will be proposed special assessments on that project. So the map kind of shows you the areas in consideration. These are streets that are very much in need of reconstructing and that will be a good project to tap. DI 8221 is the Water Reservoir Rehab Project. That was started in the fall of 2021 and completed the beginning of this year. And just as a reminder, that was rehabbing, including painting a new interior coat. The one and a half million gallon ground storage reservoir number two up at the, or up adjacent to the water treatment plant. That was a $535,000 project and that project is in the closeout phase. As I mentioned, the work was complete and items were punched in the beginning of this year. So good to have that one done. The next few are related to the airport. This is a 2022 project. It's the Airport Runway Taxi Way and Apron Crack Fill and Joint Repair Project. It's about a $270,000 project and the council will be approving that award for that bid on Monday night, contingent upon the grant approval from the federal and state funds, so. There's a picture of that. I'm not an airport expert by any means, so I'm just going to blaze through these here real quick. I'm going to be replacing the airport fuel system. That's a $600,000 project. We don't have a defined timeline and/or funding, but it's something that is in need of repair out there. And the existing system, I know, has lived its useful life, so that's on the horizon for us. Airport Automated Weather System, this is replacing and relocating the AWAS, which is the Automated Weather Observation System that will be purchased and installed by MnDOT. The cities share include site improvements, gravel access roads, and those type of things. That work is anticipated to happen this year out at the airport. It's about a $100,000 project. And the council initiated that back in January, so certainly underway or will be underway and moving forward. Another project out at the airport is the runway lighting replacement. That was complete in 2021. We use some of our local CARES funds, our federal funding, and that is currently in project finalization and closeout. So that was a good project to have done. This shows the lighting improvements on runway 13.
13.
1331.
Yep.
Depending on the way you're looking at it, it'll be 13 or 31. I didn't know how pilots called that out, but.
It's, you always say 1329 or.
Got it.
Yep.
Niner.
That cuts to niner in there.
Niner, you did.
All right, just a few more here. Public Improvement 8184, Douglas Avenue Water Main Project. That's constructing 1,800 linear feet of 20-inch water main in the 1,200 to 1,500 blocks of Douglas Avenue. And that's completing a major water main loop in the southwest part of the city. Timeline is this year into next year, $400,000 project cost. Funding coming from the water fund and the landfill contingency action fund. That project has been through preliminary design, so will likely be some traction as we move it forward in short. Water Main Loop on Scenic Drive, that's 1,100 linear feet of 12-inch water main to complete that loop. That's going to happen this season. It's about a $150,000 project. And we're preparing the preliminary engineering report for a presentation to the city council. That is related to the Pebble Shores neighborhood. Saw the plat on here just a few months ago.
That's along Scenic Drive.
That's correct. Yep, yep. Public Improvement 5351, the Eagle Ridge Road Street Improvement Project. We received a petition to have this road paved. Eagle Ridge Road is off of Two Rivers Road out towards the airport. And that would be constructing a street with curb and gutter and driveway aprons on the existing gravel road. Time and cost to be determined. Like I said, we've received the petition from the neighborhood and the preliminary engineering report is being developed now, which will tell us if there's, if it's feasible or not to move forward with that project. Public Improvement 6079 is the miscellaneous sidewalk project. Not going to spend any time on that. That's something we do every year. The Cork Street Parking Lot, that's constructing a new parking lot. Garden on the south end of Cork Street to serve Lake Alice Neighborhood and the park. Something that we talked about several years ago and it's just kind of, hasn't happened yet, but it's scheduled to be done this year. We're projecting that cost at $76,000 and we'll be ready to roll when the construction season begins. I know we awarded the project last year to a local contractor and I wasn't sure if that was still the direction that that contractor was going to go. So we'll, we'll get that done this summer. Next year, Stanton Avenue, this is a street and utility replacement from Broadway to Union. That would be a complete reconstruction project, cost to be determined. We're currently coordinating the schedule with other planned construction projects in the area, namely the mill redevelopment and the fact that we're doing Lincoln and Union and all the other streets in the same corridor this year. So that will be a 2023 project. More to come on that. Something to just keep in the back of your minds, the Union Avenue Bridge over the railroad that is just north of Lincoln Avenue on Union Avenue. Existing piling strength has been determined, so bridge rehab design can move forward. We do need to do preservation and upgrades to meet weight restriction standards on that bridge. So it's a project that has to happen. We don't have a defined timeline yet, but I just want to keep that in the back of everybody's mind. There are restrictions already related to the loads that we can have driving over that bridge. The Closed Landfill, just a quick update. We installed, we're going to install two additional groundwater monitoring wells as required by the PCA. That will expand the outer detection limits for the upper lower aquifers surrounding the closed landfill sites. This, like I said, will be done this year. We're acquiring the easements and coordinating the installation process of those wells. This is the area in which we currently monitor. You can see the proposed well locations 22 and 23, which really will expand our ability to ensure that the closed landfill isn't seeping into the aquifers or doing any damage to the aquifers. So just part of our continued obligations related to that closed cell. Downtown Riverfront Project Phase One, this is the one currently under construction on the west block. Estimated completion is June 30th of 2022. You see a lot of work happening there right now. And things will move quickly if this weather will ever cooperate. So that's soon to be complete and we're looking forward to that. International Drive, we're exploring constructing street utility extensions about 2,000 linear feet west into the Port Authority property. It currently dead ends. At the end of International Drive, this would allow for future industrial opportunities and expansion. This projected cost is $2.5 million. And city staff is currently coordinating wetland delineation and preparing alternate street lanes. It's based on what those wetland delineations determine. There is some wet spots in that area. So a very preliminary project that would certainly need some additional approvals, but that exploration is underway. And then finally, thank you for your patience. I know there's a lot of projects here, but just looking at 2022 and beyond, some of the major ones that have been discussed, the Aquatics Center, which will be on the ballot in November, Dairy Property Redevelopment, Phase Two of the Riverfront Project, which we approved going out for bid on this morning. The RTC Phase Three Scope, which will hopefully have some direction on Monday night. The Delegue and Park Improvement Project, which will be on the November ballot for sales tax as well. And then the .75, I don't know if that's.
Million.
Billion gallons, so three quarters of a million. Ground storage reservoir up at the water plant. So it's the other reservoir that wasn't rehabbed. That one would be rehabbed going forward as well. So as you can see, no shortage of projects for city staff and for the council. I think we did a good job of showing that we do in fact focus on infrastructure and maintaining infrastructure and roads and water and sewer projects. I would argue that we're almost at capacity in regards to doing those projects with our existing staff. So a lot going on. We just wanted to give folks an update on where some of those projects were at and make sure that everybody was aware of all the working parts as it relates to the thing staff is working on. So if there's any specific questions you have on these projects, I would encourage you to reach out to Brian or we can ask him Monday night as well. I had only looked at this for about 30 seconds before I got the phone call this morning, so appreciate your patience with that and.
You did really good.
Did it justice because they put a lot of time and energy and effort into it and I'm thankful.
And we'll put this out on the city's website and Facebook so people can see the things that are going on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, speaking of Facebook, I'm sure it's going to be flooded with, they're fixing the roads. And they will be rejoicing in the streets that are soon to be fixed and that's, that'll be great. I won't see.
I'm complaining about those that are not being fixed.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
Thanks, Andrew, for the update. It's been very, very good to get a recap. We got 25 pages of good stuff, a lot of work going forward within the council and city staff and obviously for the community. So that's great. And anybody have any questions or?
I think I'd like to ask one.
Oh, it's kind of.
I think you can answer this. I don't need to wait for Brian.
If not, I'm going to defer to Bill. No. By the way.
Well, being in Ward Two and since Ward Two is mentioned as one of the Mill and Overlay Projects, there is almost certainly going to be people in that neighborhood that would love to make a suggestion as to which streets they'd like to see since the list hasn't been compiled yet. If they want to do that, what's the process? If somebody wants to say, hey, this is the street I think you should do, how do they make that known? Do they tell Brian? They call you? They write a letter to the editor? What do they do?
Well, I would say they should call you. No. No, I'm teasing.
I'll call Tom.
No, call Scott. Call Scott. No, have them, have them, well, honestly, they could, they could talk to you and you could pass those, those recommendations on to our engineering staff or they can call our city engineer as well and make those recommendations. I don't know exactly the decision making. I don't know the factors that go into that decision necessarily, so there may be some that are already, you know, in consideration, but certainly it's regarded as anybody's opinion if they want to pass those thoughts on to our engineering department.
And then timeline, we expect to have that list together within the next month, I would guess.
I would guess so, yeah. And then we get a contractor, we get the bids out, get a contractor identified and the work's got to be done before the snow comes again, which is funny to talk about as we're watching snow on the window, but. as we're watching snow out the window, but we all know it's going to be here again before we know it. Yes, sir.
Didn't, didn't we have all of the roads graded? I mean, as to which ones needed to be fixed here a few years ago, and don't they actually go more by that than anything else?
That's part of the determination, but it's not as simple as that because some of those, you know, fall into the reconstruction category, and some of them probably, you know, it's a lot more based on probably the age of the roads and hitting them at those prime, you know, five to ten years after it's designed and then probably another ten years down the road. It's more the age to put that maintenance layer on and try to extend the life of that particular road, so.
But they did go over all roads and kind of grade them as.
Yeah, we have a pavement, pavement management system that has given grades to the condition of all the road surfaces, yep.
And to that point, too, the other thing they look at is what's underneath the road.
Right.
And they want to spend this money on the top of the road if we need to. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that go into other than the natural, I mean, just as a citizen, I would say, well, this road looks terrible, let's fix it. Well, isn't just the top surface of the road, obviously. There's more factors that go into it, so thanks for.
Yeah, if, just for folks benefit, you know, if we can extend the lifeline of underground water sewer infrastructure for a few years without replacing, you know, the road surface, and we know we're going to come and rip it all up again, that's where you see some of those that really fall in disrepair, but we're trying to squeeze the last little bit of life out of them before we're going to take the whole kit and caboodle and reconstruct them, so.
So, again, I'll say it again, we got a lot of work in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, so thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Item D, any additional items coming for the committee this morning? Okay, just a couple of special announcements. Obviously, Chris Shulkey mentioned tonight, we have the five o'clock here in the city chambers, the one hundred and fiftieth Camaraderie City Council Meeting. We're going to have some fun, and you don't want to miss that. And then the next scheduled council meeting will be April fourth at five-thirty in the meeting chambers. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.